All right.
Good to go. All right, we are good to go. Instructions on exiting the building in the event of an emergency, you can go out that door there. There's a set of doors to your left and a set of doors to your right. Agenda additions, deletions, or changes in the order of the agenda.
I have a very quick item that I'd like to add under other business. If that's okay, and that's, we just got a request for our forty-five day pre-application notice of a rooftop solar array. It'll be on your agenda for your next meeting, but I had a question for you about procedure.
Okay. That's. We'll add that. Open to the public for items not related to the agenda.
So I think it's on your agenda.
Yeah, yeah, it is. It is on the agenda. Yes. Yep. All right, announcements and staff report. Any of the commissioners have any announcements? There's only four of us, so. No, staff.
Just briefly, that we'll talk about it a little bit under this city center item, but yesterday I participated in a walk around of city center with our city council and a lot of that Blanchard, our project director and Jesse Baker, our city manager.
Right.
Awesome. Oh, and also we'll talk about it a little bit more later, but there was an announcement from the University of Vermont of a large housing proposal that they're going to be bringing forward to us in the coming months immediately behind the Doubletree Hotel.
Which one's the Doubletree?
Former shared.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I lost track.
At the end of Centennial Wood.
Yeah, all right. So literally where the parking lot is now.
Oh, wow.
Which belongs to UVM, interestingly.
All right. On to number five. A document we've all seen a bunch. Hopefully, we've all read at least once or twice. Planning Commission Discussion of Further Edits to the City Plan. I think all of us have seen this document a number of times. So hopefully, we've gotten most of the edits and that sort of stuff out of the way, but I want to open it up and see if there, I know that Michael has something and I see that Donna has her hand up. I see Fran has his hand up. All right, so.
Can I do ten seconds table sending just for members of the public?
Yeah.
Um, so last, at your last meeting on August eighth, you collected and reviewed all of the feedback that you, all of the work that you had been working on in July that was in a red line draft of that meeting. And then had a discussion about any further edits that you might want to make. What's in this week's packet? In the packet is a clean version that incorporates all of that, plus the Vermont Department of Health feedback, plus a number of little just copy editing changes. There's a red line version of that as well on the website. What I'll have up on the screen is those changes from last week to this week, in case anybody has any questions about those. But they are, you know, just copy editing and Vermont Department.
Okay, for members of the public, what I'd like to do is I'd like to commissioner comments first and then we'll open it up to you guys.
Question about procedure.
Yeah.
And it's for Paul. Is this the last opportunity that we will have to make changes?
So procedurally, staff's recommendation is that if you're willing to, to tonight, vote to warn your public hearing. That requires under state law thirty days notice of holding the hearing. So that would put it on September twenty-sixth. On September twenty-sixth, you'll hold your public hearing after your hearing, the commission can make any changes it chooses. Does not need to hold another public hearing afterwards. You can make any changes you want. The council is anticipating receiving it by October sixteenth. So you, if you choose to vote it to the warrant to hold, to warn the public hearing tonight, you'll have about two and a half weeks after your public hearing to digest the feedback. If you choose not to do it tonight, but say, hold, let's say a special meeting next week, you can still do that, but you'd be eating into your time after the public hearing. So our recommendation is you can still make changes after the here.
Okay.
That answers my question. Great. Okay, you've got a maybe procedural question from Ashley Adams.
Uh, yeah, go ahead, Ashley.
Hey, are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Yep. Oh, good. Um, yeah, I wanted to flag a section in the plan on page eighty-six in a city plan draft. It's actually two pages. There is a significant amount of additional language that a few of us are proposing. And we were in touch with with Paul on this and Paul Engels, not Paul Connor. And he isn't here tonight at the meeting. And, and so I don't believe that these changes have yet been submitted to the rest of you. I, I plan to submit a letter, but, but separately, we'd like these changes submitted as well. And I realize it's, it's late this evening for you to entertain the changes, but it sounds like that won't be a problem because you'll be accepting. I'm assuming input from Paul, who isn't here tonight, and again, from members of the public as well.
Uh, yes. On the pretty sixth, yeah, Paul.
Yes, that's correct. And also, just so, just to be clear, the commission last week, you, or I'm sorry, on the eighth, did ask for a little bit of additional language on page eighty-seven-ish regarding the Chamberlain Neighborhood that is in this draft. So I don't know if it's the same changes that Ashley is speaking about, but there are some changes based on the commission's your, your request from two weeks ago.
Okay, yeah, I think it, so I think this does not include then, there was additional language included, but not, we've added a, a fair amount more based on the rezoning task force recommendations and then some additional language as well.
I don't believe that we have seen that language.
No.
No. Okay, so Ashley, that's something that probably should be brought up at the public hearing.
Okay, that just feels late in the game.
Well, you're welcome to submit it anytime that you like. It's just the commission can review it formally at that time. So you're welcome to submit it anytime that you'd like.
Got it. Okay, okay, we'll do.
The commissioners will read it when they get it, so.
Ashley, did I understand, was it my understanding that Paul Engels was going to bring this, whatever it is you're proposing to the commission tonight, but is unable to be here?
Correct, right, right. Yep, and that's why I'm hopping on between meetings here that I just to, just to flag this and let you all know that that, that was my understanding and, but I know that he can't be there tonight, so.
Yeah, because I don't recall seeing any, okay, language. Okay. Donna, you had your hand up first, so.
Yeah. Pass these copies down.
And Donna, if I can remind you, whenever you're ready to speak formally, to turn on your button over there.
Ready to speak formally.
In pairs.
Yeah, there's, there's two copies there and this probably, I would have brought up at the last meeting, but
similar, but okay.
My Microsoft Teams kind of flaked out on me, so I didn't see this until today. But it had to do with Kelsey responded, and I think everybody was copied on it. I don't know how many of you saw it. But the issue of the Arby's municipal review with the legal, the South Burlington's legal team. And so I just wanted to go through the the submission or the letter that Kelsey submitted and point out some inaccuracies on it. At least my understanding of them. So. Well, the first part, this is not inaccurate. I mean, it was, it was a really good clarification that the permits are only good for one year. And, and so that, that was, that was actually something I didn't know. And that they expire, expire after a year, so that the Arby's should pertain to the, the the construction of the year. So it's a twenty twenty, twenty twenty is the current Arby's. It hasn't been updated. It should have been updated this year, but they found that very few people were actually meeting the current twenty twenty code, so we didn't want to update it without some method of verification that more people were actually building to the code, the energy, does the energy code? Just for information, Vermont does not have, does not apply statewide any building code to residential construction. So there, there is no code. There is a, there is the adoption of the IBC code for commercial construction, but there is no, there is no residential code. And legally, that kind of puts a lot of things in limbo. There is no, there is no building code. There is an energy code, but it doesn't have the building code that goes along with it in the IBC family of codes. So for a lot of people, that's a, that's a big issue. There are two places actually do enforce a residential code, and the only one that really does it properly is Montpelier. Burlington doesn't, hasn't adopted the IBC for residential. They use the commercial building code, which has some ridiculous requirements. It has some very strict requirements that normally you wouldn't have for residential, but Burlington does require those things. So that's just a little bit of background.
Can I, I have a question. The, the residential building energy standard, RBEs, that a municipality could voluntarily make, make it a requirement that complies with, make it a requirement, but.
Well, they don't actually have to because the state law requires compliance.
What the municipality can do is require a stretch code, a stretch version of it.
Yeah, you can, you can kind of have additional requirements, yes.
So, sorry, Donna, I, I, what are you asking for here?
What I want to do is to go back to the housing actions. I'd like to tighten that up a little bit more. The line that says require new homes to be highly energy efficient.
Can you, let us know where you are in the packet.
It's page fifteen.
Page fifteen?
Page fifteen, under Housing Actions. Because it really only pertains to houses. And particularly to single family and two-family houses.
Page fifteen.
It's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. It's the eighth dot down under Housing Actions. Page fifteen of the draft report.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's page fifteen.
I'm sorry, you said eight dots down.
It's fourth up from the bottom.
Require new homes to be highly energy efficient and incentivize energy efficiency. Okay, and I'm sorry, you want to?
Well, I'd like to require that they meet the current Arby's and that all certificates, including for single and two-family homes, be filed with the city as required by the document, you know, and the lawyers stated in here that Arby's certificates of compliance, it says, which are not required for single-family homes. They definitely are required for single-family homes. I don't know where, I don't know where they got this from, that it's not required. I mean, it's, it's clear right on the form, you know, where it says, is this a single-family home? So I'm not sure where that came from. And then I'm not asking that the city review the compliance forms. They have the option to if they have them, but.
You just want them filled up and filed.
Want to make sure they're filled in and filed. And so if somebody does look at them and says, oh, this looks really suspicious, that the city could have a right to require an independent verification of compliance. And that could, we could have more discussion on that because I think that's more than what's required for the, for this document, for the, for the.
So what language would you like to add at the end of that sentence?
Not at the end of the sentence, just change to be highly energy efficient, say it meets, meets the current Arby's standard.
And has to have a form filed with the city. And that's, that's my question.
And, and, and that all, and that all compliant, Arby's compliance forms are filed with the city.
Are we, is, are we overstepping our legal?
I don't, I don't know that we're overstepping our legal bounds necessarily, but I think that, remember, this is the plan. To, to, that's a very specific individual rule. We don't write our zoning in our, in the plan.
Yeah, that's.
We set it, we set an, an objective. The objective is maybe it's require, well, and new homes to be energy efficient or something along.
Oh, I'd say specifically meet the Arby's requirement.
And and I'm trying to think of exactly the right words, but take, take actions to ensure that buildings are meeting the Arby's requirements, because it could be done at the state level. And if it was done on the state level, that would be perfectly fine, too.
Yeah, it's, it would.
So I think from the plan, but it could be done. Plan doesn't need to specify that we're doing it. Plan needs to say that we want it done.
Well, basically, all you have to say is that it, all you have to say is that it complies with Arby's because right at the bottom of the form, you know, and you, you might want to put in there and just mention, you know, that the certificates be filed.
Right, but that's, that's an administrative action, not plan, I guess.
I don't think it belongs.
I'm trying to, yeah.
Well, it might not be necessary.
Policy that I'm against. I'm just saying that, that's the line between the.
So I, I guess, Donna, what, what is the language you would like to see?
I just said it before. You say, we require new homes to be to, to be compliant with current Arby's and CB standards. CBs only because multifamily homes are required to meet CBs. And this is all housing related, so.
So residential and commercial then.
So, or you can just say to be compliant with Vermont's required state energy codes for new construct, for construction.
No, still, no.
Because it's a big loophole. I mean, just, just saying, oh, highly energy efficient, like, oh, you know, this document says what that's defined and required by law to be.
Donna, is this what you're looking to say here? I've got it up on the screen there.
Compliant with Vermont State Energy Codes for new construction. Well, it's also, yeah, we're new construction, sure.
That was, that was what you said, so.
Yeah.
Feel free to change your words. I'm just parroting what you said.
Yeah, that would be, that would work. I'm not sure. Yeah, that would work.
Do we need a motion?
But, but I, I would like to, I, I will have to talk to Kelsey again and maybe have a meeting with the legal team because they obviously don't know. I mean, they, they don't know as much. Because they also said that the compliance was a two-hundred-and-fifty-page document, certificate was. No, the certificate is a one-page. You know, we're not asking somebody to fill out two-hundred-and-fifty pages. That's the whole book that says, you know, that says what you need to, you know, it explains a lot about how to do it.
We put this language in, you don't have to ask legal and, and Kelsey anything.
I would like to straighten it. I would like to make sure that the legal department understands the, the actuality of this.
You know, that's, I would imagine that's an action.
That's a separate action. That's not.
Nothing to do with the committee. I, I, we're going down a wormhole now. That's, that's why.
Point, yes, I would, I, I think that it would be helpful to have a motion, especially because there's only four of you. He will need you all to agree on changes, so.
Okay. Go ahead, Michael.
Our, our move that the language proposed by Commissioner Donna, they've been which read originally require new homes to be highly efficient and incentivize energy efficiency upgrades to existing homes be changed to require new homes to be compliant with Vermont's state energy codes and new, for new construction and incentivize energy efficiency to existing homes.
I second it.
All in favor?
All right. All right. Thank you, Donna.
You.
Michael, you had your hand up, too.
I, yes, I had change. Not a change, actually. An addition to do with carrying capacity, which I sent to staff, and I think they're shared with with you, Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
And I will go to it. I proposed that we add, as required by or in twenty-four VSA forty-three oh-two B three, this plan will consider the use of resources and the, and the consequences of growth and development for the region, the state, as well as the community in which it takes place. That's the language from that statute. Our city's school infrastructure is nearing or at capacity for our current population. Traffic congestion is already a problem in many parts of the city, and the strain on our municipal services has led to ever-increasing tax burdens. It's therefore essential to consider the limits of our city's carrying capacity and its ability to provide the facilities and services which meet the residents' expectations and maintain our community's quality of life. And I suggested two places where that could go. Both are in the general area of where the introduction is, and that's the, the, the language that's there. Is that the latest one I sent you, Paul?
I believe so. I'm just, just frame, getting the sizing correct for the.
So if there's not a general feeling that this is the right thing to do, we can defer it until after until after the public hearing. But if folks think it's a good idea and agree with it, then we can do something about it.
I, I was not at the meeting on the eighth, but it looks like there was an agreement to put some language in about study the population carrying capacity of our city to maintain a high quality of life as an action in the people and population section. I guess my feeling, Michael, is I'm not entirely comfortable.
Yeah, that language that you read was what I used to introduce the subject. It was not intended to be to be what goes into the plan.
Personally, my, my feel, I, I'm not comfortable with that language you proposed.
Okay.
Let's, let's leave it. Again, I, I, there's only four of us here. I think that's probably a discussion that we probably should have if all seven of us are here. So I, I would say, hold on it now.
That's fine. Yeah, that's why I raised that question. Okay.
When you're ready, you've got a question from the audience, but I know you wanted.
Yeah, let me, let me just finish with these guys and we'll.
Okay. On, on page thirty-three. Where we, we adjusted the language about the fifty-one percent, but it's sentence got left out, so it doesn't make sense.
Under environment, Brad?
Yes, it's under environment. Let me get to thirty-three here.
I have a question on that page.
So the, the, the second paragraph, it says.
Sorry, Frank, can you say which page in so that I'm?
Yeah, thirty-three. Right there. It should be up in the.
Starts with approximately forty-one percent.
Yes, oh, maybe you're in a different draft than I am. I'm not in the ready line one.
Okay.
It's, it's right, right at the beginning, under environment.
Okay, hang on. I will get there.
It's page thirty-three in the packet. Brother, I'm sorry, it's page thirty-eight in the packet, but thirty-three in the
Okay, I think I found it. Approximately forty-one percent that.
Yes, okay, so that was the part where originally it started out with fifty-one percent and then you had a goal for fifty-one percent. So I submitted some language, but I think something got left out because as, as you read this, you only come to forty-nine percent and the other fifty-one percent start including. Right, right. So what, what I had suggested originally was let's see, approximately forty-one percent of South Burlington is considered built, meaning the lot is small or has a home, et cetera, through, through the end of that sentence. And then approximately eight percent is unrestricted land. Instead of saying the remaining, you start out with the word approximately. All right, approximately percent is unrestricted, including unbuilt, right? And then we need a sentence that says, of the remaining open land, comma, some is designated as city parks, some as land for schools, some is restricted through current regulation, and some is conserved either publicly or privately.
Yeah, I mean, there have been some questions publicly asked, too, and Bob Britt and I talked about this again, that, that it leaves a perception when people read this and they say, okay, so forty-nine percent is protected or unrestricted, then fifty-one percent is, is going to be conserved and it's confusing to people. Like, it just sounds like it, it's very confusing to people. And I don't know what can be done to clarify the meaning of that because I don't even understand exactly what it means.
Right.
I think we already proposed that the fifty-one percent should be not conserved, it's, it's protected. It has some form of regulatory protection, and I thought we had already changed it from conserved to protected.
I know we talked about it. I don't remember.
So as a goal, you now have, that first goal says protect at least fifty-one percent.
Well, you can't, we can't say that where, where's the, that fifty-one percent is currently concerned.
Right, it says prioritize in conservation of contiguous lands. But, but yeah, there's a lot of confusion about what, what exactly that means.
So I, I think how I would try to describe it in, 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 I'm not sure these are the right words to put in the plan, but fifty-one percent of the land area of the city has some form, some level of either public ownership or, or restriction or conservation on it. It doesn't mean that it's a permanent level of conservation or restriction. It doesn't mean that it's, if it's public land, it doesn't mean that it's necessarily conserved, but in terms of broad categories, it's, it's different from the eight percent, which is land that is eligible to be used for, if somebody chose to build on it today, they, they could.
So, 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 so some of that fifty-one percent is parks.
It's parks, it's cemeteries, it's school land, it is wetlands, it is wetland buffers as designated by the city. It's land that's been permanently conserved, like the Montland Trust, its habitat blocks. It's all those things that fall into the, a, a very broad umbrella of. Yeah, I'm not sure.
Is there a way?
Doesn't feel like the right word. Does there some way to put it?
Right.
In there that kind of describes that?
Yeah.
I think you said it earlier. It's.
Yep.
Yeah, because it would, it would help, it would help immensely with public review.
People read that and they think, is it? Is it all considered?
Right, they think, oh, especially the housing people, you know, they're going to think, oh, you're making no land available.
Um, I think the language that Fran has is pretty close. I would suggest that for readability, you might want to put this new sentences of his after the forty-one percent, but before the eight percent. And then maybe describe it as said, approximately fifty-one percent of the land falls into a category of open land, that, open land with some level of environmental protection, some of which has a, you know, it, it includes city parks, land for schools, habitat.
We already made that change where, where the fifty-one percent appeared. But I don't see it here.
No, let me go back to a prior draft. It is possible that.
Don't go backwards.
Well, once, once you get the explanation, it makes sense, but when people read it, you do not understand it.
Yeah, what I was trying to do is get the number fifty-one from being listed twice.
Maybe we need to list it twice just to make it more clear.
Do, yeah, it, having it there as, as something that exists and then something that's a goal is what makes it confusing.
So maybe way to do is to say, what are you trying to achieve between what exists and, and the goal? It may be the same amount of land, but a higher level of protection of that land.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
Would that make sense? To, to, so then you're repeating it, but the, the objective is to take actions to more permanently string those areas, you know, we could, there's also, there's a hundred actions that could be done to, to achieve that.
But I, I agree.
Add to it.
I agree with Donna, I think that in that, that second paragraph there, whatever, the one we were just talking about, it should be described. A little bit better so people have an idea of what it is.
So the fifty-one percent consists of.
Yes.
The remaining fifty-one percent consists of, and that's right, that, that paragraph would be the place to put that.
Uh, one percent of. Remaining open land?
Well, it's, it's not the remaining open land, it's. It's like the remaining period. It's like everything other than what you've included in the forty-nine percent.
Also, Fran, did you have a couple other things or no?
No.
Okay.
It's different.
Yeah. Do we need a motion?
Regulatory or what's the other kind of um, uh, uh, legal? Protection?
Good.
City parks, uh, I, I'm actually just gonna say parks cuz they're not necessarily city parks. Public parks. With parks, um. I know that this probably falls under the last category, but for, for clarity, I would say condominium association land. That probably has legal protections, but that is part of that land.
Come condo common land or something, yeah.
Um, and. How does that? How does that, um? Yeah. And then I'd say maybe the ri, the remaining eight percent.
Yep, that's much better.
How does that, that, and then if you wanted to friend your point, if you wanted to make the action. A little bit more specifically, what are you trying to achieve out of that? Because that was your original point, right? Are you comfortable with this?
Yeah, that's, that better describes the fifty-one percent. Donna, is that clear?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's really good.
Do we need a motion to amend that or are we?
Can I suggest, um, just to let Fran have his, the piece that he was recommending? Well, I guess you can take it as two or as one, whatever you want to do.
What, what changes did you want to see in the bullet? Or on the, uh, the goal?
The protect, protect is, protect is, is a difficult word there too.
Didn't really work on the goal.
When, is it even feasible to use the word conservation there, which it, you know, will involve some kind of easement and a third party? Uh, I think it has to be protection.
Well, you said higher level of protection. Yeah, then I'm not sure.
Well, but considering that some of that fifty-one percent is parks and some of its active parks. And some, and some of it's conserved land, so not all of it's being protected or conserved. Some of it's actually being utilized for public use. So that's different than conservation.
Conservation isn't, is an action. It doesn't necessarily, you can conserve a piece of land for active recreation.
Oh, why don't you just say instead of prioritizing, just say con, conserving contiguous, can, well, no, I guess.
Prioritizing is okay, it's just a question.
Yeah.
Somebody suggested a higher level of protection?
Paul, Paul mentioned that earlier, you know, I, I'm not sure if that's. A higher level or a more permanent, I'm not sure if that would be.
Oh, boy, wow.
I mean, I'm not, I'm not all that uncomfortable with, with the way it's written.
Yeah, it's, I, I would be okay with leaving it the way it was written too.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
It's Fran's idea, so.
I, I, I think I'm okay with the goal. It was the way the first paragraph there was written, we had. We had the fifty-one percent showing up twice. As.
I think.
Right, so I think we, we worked the wording, so I think it's okay.
Alright.
What if, what if you just put and just add one word and say protect at least fifty-one percent of the city's open land area? Oh, no, then, no, that's not right either because.
Did you have something else on the actions as well?
No, no.
I think you might as well just leave it.
So do we, we need a motion to amend that paragraph?
Can I suggest one alteration that might make Fran's comment a little more helpful? What if we put the word restriction instead of protection here?
Regulatory or legal?
Restriction, and then the action is to protect. Cause then, then it's a different word. It says that, cuz it's to say protection and then I think your point is, why is the goal to do the same thing that we already have?
Exactly.
Makes sense.
So that might, um. Cuz I think what, what I'm trying to say in this sentence is that it's a huge gamut of what that represents. So the action can be to more permanently and, and more thoroughly follow. Take the actions that can be done to, to make those more permanent.
Those, public parks, condominium, common lands, et cetera, those are examples, not, not comprehensive.
They're, they're in addition, so the public parks may have no regulatory or legal restriction on them there. It is also public parks.
Alright.
Okay.
So.
Do you wanna have a motion?
Uh, yes, uh, I make a motion that we amend that paragraph with the new language that Paul has inserted. Under the environmental section. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, um, if that's it for commissioners, uh, uh, what? One more thing, Donna, okay, what do you got?
Um, and I didn't look at each of this, it's, well, toward the end where we talked about the different, um.
Um, Donna, can you turn on your?
This, this specific one is actually on page ninety-one, but um, I was, I was reading an article in uh. AARP magazine today that was talking about um ADUs. And I wondered if under the, you know, different housing areas, we could put under, um. Actions uh to encourage accessory dwelling unit construction.
Where, I'm sorry, what, what page you at?
Well, this particular one's on ninety-one, but it would apply in all four quadrants, um.
Ninety-one is the southeast quadrant, right?
Yeah, it is. Because, you know, that's the least dense and I think it's a place where I think we really do have to. You know, focus on increasing density just through ADUs at least, um, because the newer developments. Have a higher density already in the, in the southeast quadrant, but the older existing neighborhoods have very large houses and quite large lots. And would be actually one of the better areas to.
Is that, it sounds like that might be something that would go in the housing section.
I don't know, I don't know.
And it should be citywide.
No, that's why, that's why, that's why I'm saying would be.
It should be citywide. I don't know if we have that in the housing section, do we?
Uh, we.
Facilitate.
We facilitate it, um, I think that there could be a separate action if the city so chose to encourage it. Um, some communities have put out, um, uh, basically, uh, um, model ADUs that are essentially pre-permitted, for example. Um, here's a design, if you go and you want to put this in your backyard, you are pre-permitted and can. Nick, were you showing me that or was it Marty? One, some communities are starting to do that, so there's an action that could go beyond allowing if the city chose to.
Wouldn't we want to do that in the regs to incentivize? And then, and then provide the incentive rather than in here.
Well, just saying you're encouraging, you're not saying you're incentivizing it, but you could, you could. You know, it's, it's, it's kind of tough to incentivize it cuz people usually build them for their own family use. And you don't really need to incentivize them to do that. The incentives in Burlington are when people. Utilize them to house someone with a lower income that is not a relative.
So.
Typically, you don't provide an incentive to build them.
Can I suggest if you'd like to add that, Donna, maybe under the housing actions where it talks about a variety of regulatory programs to preserve and increase the city's housing supply. Of affordable and moderate income, um, it gives a list of some things maybe and promoting accessory dwelling units.
Perfect.
There we go.
That's the place, that's the location.
Uh, first bullet under housing.
Yes, if you're not old enough to get a AARP magazine. Bring a copy in, it was beautifully done.
I'm good. Thank you though.
Um, so do you want to make a motion on that one?
Uh, yeah, Donna, you want to make a motion on?
Um. Uh, yes, that, that we amend the first of the housing action. Um, to include and promoting accessory dwelling units.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're unanimous crowd tonight. Um, Michael, did you have something else?
I had a, a correction that I'd requested before, which is on page twenty-nine of the document. And uh, the sentence re, reads among other things, vehicles must be reduced. Or changed over to electric. Well, you can't reduce a vehicle, but you can reduce its use. So it's at the very top of, of page twenty-nine.
Uh, what's the beginning?
Second, in addition to land, uh, land and infrastructure changes.
Uh, that's not on page twenty-nine of the, of the packet or of the?
Of the document.
Page twenty-nine.
Oh, there it is.
Thirty-five on, it's thirty-five on the package.
It's up further, up further, right there, second, right to begin.
We're all working on different pages here.
As I said here, in addition to.
Yeah, you, that must be reduced. Personal vehicles must be reduced, uh, the use of person, the, their use of personal vehicles must be reduced. That's fine, yeah, I sent this to, to Kelsey a few times, but she probably didn't get to it yet, but that's.
We're now at it.
Where, that's not a, that doesn't require emotion, it's pure, pure grammar.
Pure grammar, alright.
Um, but for the rest, I haven't got fa, uh, far enough reviewing the proposals that I made before. And seeing which of them are in here.
Okay.
Um, when commissioners are all done, I have one staff request.
Okay.
For a change that, uh, we wanted to.
You, you did.
Talk with you about it.
Mentioned that, yes.
I mentioned it to you, I haven't mentioned, uh, uh, we wanted to talk with you about it before we did it, we don't. Um, there's no significance to it other than usability, um, the twenty-sixteen plan, uh, numbers, the. Goals and the actions just for use in the future, because when we apply for grants or when we do a zoning change, to be able to say. The seventh bullet down is very awkward to be able to say action number thirty-six or action a hundred and two, um. Are you comfortable if we just sequentially number them just for purposes of being able to reference them?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. We will do that in the draft that goes to, um, for public hearing.
Okay, okay. Alright, um, members of the public. I don't know if anyone wants to raise their.
I think you have one from Chris Trombley at some point and then.
Uh, well, I, Chris, we'll, we'll start with you.
Hey, um, uh, thank you for adding the ADU language, that was, um, that was an item in our, um. Request from the committee for language change, so, um. It, I was just for clarification, I saw some awesome comments from the health department on the housing section. Um, just more of a process question. Would you, ha, has the decision already been made that that wouldn't be considered at this time or that would come out in the public process? How do you, how would you process that feedback from the health department?
I'm gonna let Paul answer that. Um, well, Kelsey reported to the commission that the Department of Health had. A number of, um, uh, helpful piece of feedback, um, at your last meeting, I wasn't here, but my understanding is commissioners were. Okay, you hadn't seen it in the language yet, you were, but you were generally okay with them doing so, so it's in the draft tonight. Um, it's a professional review from them, so I guess, uh, our assumption is that you are comfortable with it unless you're expressing. Any discomfort with any of the language.
Been incorporated.
Right, it's the draft that's in tonight, so first it's in tonight's draft.
Oh, okay, I, okay, I, I, I guess I, I must be looking at an outdated version, um, from the eighteenth.
Uh. Uh, so the eighteenth does include it, it's just not redlined. There's a redline version on our website.
Yep.
And, um, it is called out by Kelsey, but it's in, uh, exceptionally faint color boxes. Thank you, Microsoft Word.
It's actually not red, it's mob.
That, that's the one thing I have done, um, or do we need a motion to approve those, uh, Department of Health?
I would say that if, um, if you are prepared tonight to vote to send the whole package to the plant, to the, to a public hearing, it would include that. So Chris, does that answer your question?
I, I, I guess I, I, I'll have to go back to the package just to see what language from their comments were added. Um, specifically, they, they did a nice job calling out the, um, supporting cohesive neighborhoods in lifecycle housing. And then they, um, also had one, uh, regarding ex, uh, exposure to harmful substances in their homes. And that just wasn't an angle that came up in our discussion on the housing section was, um. Just those particular topics and then, then they mentioned the, the low V I, VOC emissions. Um, that's like, it was all fantastic stuff and I don't know where else that would be captured.
Um, and then they. Do recall the second one that you're speaking of very specifically being in there.
Yep.
Um. Hang on one second. Doing a screen share here. Um. So what you're seeing up on the screen in the red, the last two bullets are specifically from the Department of Health?
Yep, that's perfect.
And then I think that the, the other one, um, that you mentioned, uh, there was very similar language already in the text.
Yep. And then they had, and, and if this is captured somewhere else, but the, they mentioned, um, looking at. Um, zoning and I, you know, I kind of get a theme that this plan was agreeable to that, but it, it wasn't. Necessarily called out specifically, um, in, in, in the housing section. Um, and now that kind of goes then with, I remember commissioner ma, made a mention about, um. Uh, adaptive reuse, that was a, a, a perfect, uh, term, um, you know, redevelopment, infill. Um, and zoning kind of falls into that, uh, when I think about zoning, it kind of falls into those buckets. Um, just if, it, it, would you find value in just more specifically calling out zoning, uh? You know, like missile mid, missing middle, I think of that as, that kind of captures the whole zoning bucket.
Right, so I think, um, what Kelsey did, uh, Chris, is if you look on the screen, shoot, I just lost it. Um. Where did I just put it? Sorry, I just had it and then I lost it.
I mean, in, in, increasing middle, missing middle?
Yeah, I had it and then it just disappeared. There we are, um, if you look on the screen right now, uh, pursue larger scale, scale redevelopment, infill, long trans, corridors. Thoughtful infill redevelopment, adaptive reuse within existing neighborhoods, increase the missile, missing middle housing units by including. In small scale redevelopment, so I think what Kelsey did was she looked through the Department of Health feedback and where it was. Um, repeating, it wasn't specifically changed, but it was, um, made sure that it was accounted for.
Yep, that's awesome. Um, alright, well, uh, thank, thank you so much, um, that was, uh, that, I think that was just the big one, um. I don't, uh, just, um, I, I appreciate, um, Michael's recommendation on the capacity study. That, um, that, there is some additional language in the, um, in that VSA section that. Out of context, there's other pieces of capacity that speaks to, um, affordable housing specifically and. If, if the group was to take that up at a later date, um, it would be awesome to expand that conversation to talk about, um, affordable housing capacity as well. But, um, that's it.
Thank you, Chris.
Thanks Duncan.
He said that he'd like to participate in the conversation about the, that you said you'd defer to the next meeting.
Gentlemen.
Thanks. And Frank, when you sit down, if you can hit the little button that turns the green light, bright green.
And then you've got to state your name for us.
Press the button there.
Yep.
Is that it?
There you go.
Great, thanks. Uh, Frank von Turkovich, I'm here. To ask you if you could clarify a few uh, issues. I've been following the evolution of the uh, revisions to the city plan uh, for the past few months. And.
Could you pull your mic a bit closer to you?
Yeah. The, as a landowner uh, who anticipates some. Uh, impact from the changes that are being considered. Uh, I guess my question for you is how, we're in the process and maybe you're not there yet, but I, I know that the, that a map has been produced and it's been sort of fuzzified to uh. Make it less uh, less exact so that we don't focus on specific boundaries. But how did that map uh, evolve? Can you give me some insight into how? Um, the color classifications have been assigned?
There was a map in the two thousand sixteen comprehensive plan that was very similar. Um, and I, you know, I, my, my memories of when we worked on that map then was it was sort of an aspirational, you know, this is what we'd like to see.
Yeah.
You know, this is future land use, what we would like to see this land used as in the future. Um, and obviously some of it reflected what it was currently being used as. Uh, Paul, I don't know if you want to?
Yeah, I think that um, that, that's accurate and I'd say that the updates in twenty twenty for the twenty twenty four plan were to um. Incorporate some policy um, decisions that you had made such as um, looking at habitat blocks and showing them more clearly. Um, there's a new category uh, called commercial industrial with supporting uses that was added. So that was previously listed as commercial industrial. It's been moved to commercial industrial with supporting uses with the idea that. There's an, this whole purple area has the opportunity to. Incorporate some level of overnight stays um, associated with business, maybe ancillary uses while. Some of the other areas like immediately next to the airport or where, say FedEx is, really need to be just commercial industrial without some of those sort of. Extended stay hotels or things like that because that might not um, be a very good quality of life for folks. And then I think um. There was a little bit of um, tidying of the map generally, but not, uh, and I guess the last thing is in the southeast quadrant. Um, in the area of the village, um, where the mill market and deli is, it was shown as red in the twenty sixteen plan, which was um. Balanced uh, mixed use, mixed commercial and residential. The, it is now shown as being orange, which is more primarily residential at a higher scale. It's not really a policy change. It's more of a reflection that the scale of that village is. Lower scale than say Shelburne Road or City Center. And then in twenty sixteen, that didn't really represent it very well. The last big change was that this plan. Talks a lot more about these colors than in twenty sixteen. It was just a brief paragraph. And most of the discussion was by geographic areas, southeast quadrant, southwest quadrant. Whereas now a lot more of the discussion is within the colors themselves and the aspirations for. Um, you know, yellow is a primarily residential low. Lower scale neighborhood, but what does that actually mean? You know, it means, it's not entirely residential. It means that there's commercial uses in it. It means that the city wants to have parks in it, connectivity, et cetera. I appreciate that. I, I'm actually asking more specifically about the uh, conservation uh, color, the green color.
True.
And I, I, I was, I'm glad that you, that I was given an opportunity to listen to hear you talk about um. The percentage of land in South Burlington that's currently uh, viewed as being conserved or built or uh. The eight percent that I assume is the percentage that's available for future development. If, if you. The forty one, the fifty one, you've got about eight percent left. Uh, is this, is, is the focus of the planning commission to? Color more of the land green to, so that we, we reduce the amount of land that's available for other uses or um. I, I mean, I'm, I, I guess I have to say that I, I, I think that when all of this uh, process is completed, the decisions that the city makes to. Designate specific parcels of land as being conservation land or con- conservation, I guess is the word. I'm really anxious to know what that means to a landowner. Uh, if it's um. It, it sounded like it's the intention of the city to try to protect that land and prevent any other use. And that the only land will be available in the future is this eight percent that we're talking about. That's what we have left. Is that your viewpoint on this? Uh?
I'd say, I, I think that some of the green in this map reflects some of the changes we made in the L D Rs when we redid article twelve. Um, we added some green, obviously with the habitat blocks. We expanded some wetland buffers. But. Paul, maybe you can answer and say, doesn't, I, I don't recall that there were any large chunks of green. Yeah, added that weren't already.
More an acknowledgement of what's on the ground.
I think there are. What's on the ground or what is regulated.
Yeah.
I mean, I realize the map is fuzzy. I, I must have seen a clearer version of, of, of a few weeks ago that I was able to identify certain parcels that are. Proposed to be, I, I just don't know how much time the commission has put into actually looking at the map and saying, yes, this, we're going to color this green or not. And uh, or who did that work? And if we can, I would appreciate more insight into how the commission uh. Is looking at specific parcels because we all know that the next step is to look at zoning and, and redefine some of these uh, boundaries.
We, we do have a map and I, I believe you. Sent it out to us. I think it's probably available on the city website about unbuilt parcels and what.
Yep, we do have a um, a, a, a layered map of what is considered built and unbuilt. Um, and then we have various different regulatory restrictions uh, or um, conservation land, that kind of thing. Yeah.
But that, that's a more specific map by that show.
Well, these are all supporting maps that were used to. To, to create this.
I'm, I'm just thinking, there, there might be a map that you could reference that would give you a little more clarity in terms of, of. Plots and stuff. I'm not sure if that's.
And, and is it fair to, to say that when this process moves forward to the next stage, that we will have an opportunity to look at that map with a little more precision and say that, hey, this. You know, e- examine certain parcels that are now being included in that color scheme so that we can appreciate what. Direction the city might go in the future with uh, with respect to zoning uh, for those parcels. You know, parcel that, that this, what I'm trying to say is that if the city plan has colored a parcel green conservation. Then the expectation from an owner would be that it would be the city's intent to. Change that zoning from perhaps uh, high density to low density or no density. Uh, is that, is that? Am I understanding your process correctly when I, when I look at this?
That would be a question I would defer to you, Paul.
I mean, I, I guess, first of all. The, an underlying reason for why the map has um, i- is fuzzy is because it is not a rate, it is not intended to be a zoning map. It is a. Map of general, it's not a parcel by parcel map. It's, it's an overall planning map. I think the implementation um, of this is the hard work that is, has been done by prior commissions and will be done for fut- by future commissions. Um, about how to best achieve. The objectives in here. And so, you know, for example, the commission went through a, a lot of work to develop the um, habitat block tools. You decided to create the habitat blocks and also to create. The allowances and exceptions where if more than seventy percent of a parcel is covered by habitat block, that a certain portion can be built on. The. Future land use map can't really get to that level of nuance because that's the implementation of a general aspiration of conservation in that area, for example. Or, you know, you could say the same thing of, you know, the tools along Shelburne Road are not the same as the form-based code and City Center both are put into the red. There may ultimately be different tools to actually implement. Um, similar, but you know, slightly different visions. But you know, this is, the, the policy of making this is, is up to you all. Well, thank you. I, I mean, I, what I'm getting from this discussion is that. This color scheme doesn't necessarily represent a policy decision on the part of the planning commission to. Designate specific parcels, o- other than those that have been identified as habitat blocks and uh, the work that was done over the past few years, but there's nothing new. That's happened in your work over the past year that would. Um, encumber other parcels that haven't been identified as habitat blocks yet.
Yeah, it's not a zoning map.
Pardon me?
It's not a zoning map is what you're.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, well, that's, that's really my main concern is that I, you know, you know, the map uh, is something that all of us re, uh, can, can see and, and to get, we assume there's some. Critical information there, but it sounds like that process will.
It, it certainly was not meant to be a down to the parcel.
Okay.
Delination of different zones.
Thank you. I, I mean, I may have missed that. I just didn't want, I'm sorry. It's my phone being quiet, so. That's my reason for being here tonight. Is to make sure that, you know, I haven't missed a process where actual land holdings were examined and determined to be. A certain uh, category at this stage of the uh, of the planning process. That, that, that haven't as yet been designated that through habitat block designations or zoning.
At my best of my knowledge, no.
No, I mean, it, it is, and it is a aspirational plan about the, the broad scale intent. So it is a policy document from the perspective of, this is a broad policy intent. It is not a regulatory or a, you know, parcel by parcel. Uh, action to say, you know, we're going to acquire this land or zone that uh, precisely that way, but it is a policy generally of saying. A area in green is intended to be principally conservation and open space.
Or is already.
Or is already. All right. Um, an area in orange is, you know, intended to be or is already principally residential, higher scale. Thank you, and we'll have, there'll be more clarity on that as, as the plan, as we go from a fuzzy map to a more precise. This is the proposed map. It is intended to be fuzzy as the official document. Okay, then I think what we'd like to do, when I, for speaking for myself, uh, is we'd like to take a more uh. Careful look at that fuzz and maybe come back to you when you move forward and have a, have a deeper discussion. Yeah, so that's an important clarification. The planning commission's intent at this time is that this is the document that is supposed to be fuzzy as the adopted document. To reflect that it's not a zoning map. Okay, I appreciate that. And I, and I, and I, that much of the process I'm, I'm aware of and didn't, uh, it just wasn't clear whether. Uh, it just wasn't being shown to us yet, but it sounds like you intend to leave it uh, in that fuzzy state, which I can understand. And, and if you have any very specific questions that you'd like to pose to staff that is not, you know. The commission makes the policy, but if you have questions that you'd like to ask us as you prepare whatever your feedback is, you know how to reach out to us. Of course I do. And I will point out that I think the legislature passed a statute this year dealing with ADUs. So this may have already gotten ahead of us, uh, that uh, cities cannot, um, I think it's. Twenty four of V S A forty four twelve that um. Uh, disables city municipalities from restricting A D Us. So I think a lot of that work's been done by the state and. Should make it easier for that kind of po- policy to be implemented in South Burlington. Great. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Frank.
It's time.
So for, for the record, Dan Albrecht, uh, Proctor Avenue over by Rice. Um, I just kind of want to check in on a couple items. Cause I haven't had a chance to go through like the new version compared to what my comments were. But I did, um. I did want to just. Zoom in on one thing particularly to see if you guys had any reaction to it. Um. Was the changes, it's on the last page of my uh, testimony that I submitted on August second. Uh, I don't know if it's still page eighty, Paul, this language there about. Um, I guess it's probably in the description of the S E Q. Now, if you can do a search for um, something like. Amenities like veterans park that block of text there to see if that still remains the same. Cause it sort of strikes at the heart of, of what my testimony is about, so.
I will find the section.
All right, thanks.
Starts on page seventy, oh, yes. These areas on page seventy nine.
There we go, I got it.
Okay.
Seventy nine on the document, not the package.
Yep, right, okay. I don't know if you can bring up that block of text, because I, you know, I had suggested additions and I just. I just was curious if you guys had any reaction to it.
Dan, is this the correct one up on the screen?
That's, that's the correct, yes.
Same thing for collectors out in front here.
So. So as my suggested change there that I made, you know, when I submitted the testimony on August second, it's. Put this way, this is, this is partially a position of equity I'm coming from as a resident of the area where the. Planning commission and the city council have to deter- determine most all new growth is supposed to go. Uh, it says a resident adjacent to the area that the planning commission just increased the, again, hypothetical, because somebody would have to buy the transfer of development rights, but. Hypothetically, the density, I believe, right adjacent to Shelburne Road could be quadrupled if somebody bought enough A D Us, I mean, not A D Us, um.
T D Rs.
T D Rs, but you have that correct. And so. The language that I suggested. You know, I mean, I would love to see increased density across the board. We all agree that's the best way to fight climate change. We have a large section of the city that is essentially. It's a large, single-family gated community. That every time they do anything. Gets in a car. And comes to my neighborhood or goes north. And there's. And I don't, I don't count the mill market as a, as a realistic commercial resource, okay? That, I mean, it's nice. It's good to have. It's better than nothing. And the deli next to the corner of Tilly Drive or whatever. I mean, it's better than nothing, so. As a, as a professional planner, as well as a resident of the city. The language changes I were talking is a little bit about equity. So if, if the city is going to go out wholesale. And essentially tell residents of the Shelburne Road corridor and the Wilson Road corridor, you're taking all the growth. And yet ask nothing of these large blocks of single-family neighborhoods, single-family only. I mean, nothing. I mean, maybe there's a couple of in-house yoga studios. But every time, all these areas leave their houses. The, for everything, everything they do. And it just, it just defies the imagination to have this. Document which puts climate change. As the central thesis, which I disagreed with anyway, because you presented us four themes at the beginning and then you. I don't know why you felt the need to change. From what you presented to the public to that, other than all I can ascribe it to is. A sincere belief that we just have to keep talking about climate change and you guys want to do that, that's fine. But from a sheer equity standpoint, as well as the best weapon against climate change, and you know it, every one of you in this room knows it. It's density, density, density. And it's infrastructure, infrastructure, infrastructure. Reserving some little grassland. So somebody can have a nice view. Is antithetical to it. In the larger realm of places you get outside Vermont, people talk about the fifteen minute city and everybody's in transit and there are no cars. If you really wanted to go all in. So it's really, really frustrating me and it burns me to no end. That behind all this thing about climate. Certain areas of the city are off limits. They get no change. They got their single-family neighborhood. They got their large lots. And every time they go shopping, do anything. They get in a car and they come to my neighborhood or they go to Burlington or elsewhere. And so this thing's supposed to be inclusive, fair and just, then do it. Say to those neighbors. You're one mile away from Tilly Drive with hundreds of jobs. It's only going to get bigger. And yes, we're going to zone for commercial there. If it's all about climate change and my neighborhood is going to be. Two hundred yards away, a hundred yards away. From high density residential, which we already have, and I'm in favor of because we're building community. Yet somehow. Yet somehow, all those neighbors and the rest of that part of the city have to bear, no. And that's just, that's just really insulting, and I I'm I'm, it's just bugging me to no end. Professionally, as well as from a social justice standpoint. So to sit there and cloak this in climate change, oh, how good we are, look, Greta, look at us, we're doing our job.
You know, that's, that isn't fair. We've given this a lot of thought, Dan, and we cannot unbuild. Cider Mill, South Village, Dorset Farms, Butler Farms, we can't unbuild them. If if I'd been around when those were built, yes, I would have been as angry about it and and incensed about it as you are, but. You know, we we aren't, we we can't take responsibility for what's already there, and you're right, people who live in those.
You can retrofit, and when this comes down to implementation. And the powers that be that have been running the agenda in this town start to take away more and more use of. Water and sewer. Oh, now, so we're coming up with these new categories, grasslands, meadows, already got habitat blocks, already got, and you know what it's about. So I'm just saying, you've had the courage to advocate for good planning.
Dan, Paul just pointed something out to me. If if you look at the land use map, yellow is principally residential low scale. You know, and if you look under there, there are some bullets that talk about kind of what you're talking about.
I I did see some of that, yeah.
Adequate public infrastructure for bike ped networks, support thriving neighborhoods by allowing encouraging infill. Small-scale commercial, allow small-scale multifamily housing to blend in with single-family, so there there is some.
Yeah, and I saw some encouraging language under housing, we talked about it, but it's just ironic. That, and some of the language that I borrowed in my suggestion for the tax. Which acknowledge, there's other parts of the plan where you say very lowered residential d- density. Means fewer people living walking distance to each other, the schools and nearby commercial areas, that that. Part that I just read there came from another part of description of another part of the neighborhood, so my my point is. If there's an acknowledgement that that's not. Congruent with the goal of climate change, why isn't that language in the SEQ language? That's all I'm saying. So I, and I do, and that's what's a little hard, because there are parts of this plan, and like I say, it's a great written plan, and I think. Some flexibilities, I'm just nervous when I see things about, oh, some sewers, and I didn't make a. Specific comment in part because Kelsey told me your guys are still working on the issue of the sewer map and all that, that's going to drive development that any that can happen in density. But my point is, it's just when I see now habitat blocks, okay, you did that, and now it's. Low res, water and sewer is not appropriate in 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 low-density residential. Why isn't it? If the goal is to fight climate change, we don't want all these people commuting from all hell and gone. Which is all they can do now, nobody can afford to buy anything here, then then it's then it's equal, so and and sewer and water is our best. Weapon to to fight climate change and to promote density, density is what does it, so my main point is from a justice standpoint.
I I I, we we get that.
Right, I get it, and the city, what I'm saying is, I'm watching the city do everything they can to increase the density in my neighborhood. And all where the renters are and not in the established single-family.
I certainly get the equity argument, Dan.
So that's that's my main point, and there there's a flexible language in here, and I just want to be sure it's, you know, consistent messaging across the board, that's all, so.
So, which is your neighborhood, Dan, just so we can contextualize?
I am in Proctor Avenue, right there. But corner of Proctor and Orchard.
Okay, yeah.
So I'm about, you know, two hundred yards from Shelburne.
No, I know, you and I had a brief discussion about density and I'm all for it, but.
And you mentioned like a potential retrofit of South Village, that's maddening, little aside. When I moved here in two thousand and one to do the masters in uh natural resource planning at UVM. And the guy from South Village was there talking to our graduate class. And he was promoting new urbanism, and at that time, new urbanism included uh small-scale commercial embedded within neighborhoods, which Paul. Knows a lot more about than I do, and I remember asking the guy, I think he was from Maryland. Like, wh- where's the commercial there in South Village? You got this nice density, and he's like, well, that would require zoning change and everybody would, you know.
However, that zoning change has since happened, and at the master plan level, they are approved to put in that commercial space now.
Good, good, yeah, so that's.
It's too bad it wasn't part of the original. But it is, the the site is now there.
And so that's what I'm thinking of in terms of little pockets or on travel corridors, yeah, nobody foresaw that. Twenty years ago, Tilly Drive was going to become a thing, and it's a thing now, and it's just sort of ironic that. None of the red is clustered over by Tilly Drive, so that's, that's kind of what I'm getting at, is like, we see the same thing with the transit issue. We need transit, you guys talk about it in your plan, from southwest to northeast, but we're still stuck with this assumption that everybody's going to downtown Burlington. And they're not.
Get anywhere, yeah.
Yeah, so they were, yeah, a long time ago, so, thanks, I appreciate your patience with me and you guys are doing a great job getting input and I. Applaud the staff are doing a great job, so.
Thank you, Dan.
Well, that that leaves us at um a threshold of. The the next action would be to warn the public hearing. I I will say now that Dan has left, then he does have a point. I mean, I think he does have a point on equity, yeah.
And like the page fourteen change the text is followed, I absolutely agree with that, absolutely, in all areas of the city.
So. I I guess a a procedural question, Paul, so if if we push this to warn the public hearing. We'll get more input, and then we have two weeks after that to make changes.
Right, so you have the 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 night of the twenty-sixth, you could, you have a regular meeting on October tenth or so. And we're anticipating that if you get a lot of feedback or you you yourselves have some discussion, you may want to have a special meeting. In between there to go through this, make whatever changes you choose to, so that council gets it in their hands by the sixteen.
Not in this country from October the seventh, October the seventeenth to November the second.
Well, it'll be out of your hands by that point.
It it will be done.
But you're going to miss all the next fun stuff, Michael.
Which is?
After the plan, there's also, there's the doing.
Okay, so.
So, um, well, let's, let's hold it, there there's language that Paul put in there, are you reading it?
Pursuant to twenty-four VSA four-three-eight-four, I move to warn a public hearing on the draft municipal development plan. For city plan twenty-four for Tuesday, September the twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-three. At seven PM and to approve the accompanying written report.
I would be willing to second that.
And Sue, just for the record, that includes the changes um made and voted on by the commission tonight.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. That's unanimous.
All right, we're off to a public hearing.
And I'm asked for a change in the agenda at this point.
What would you like to change, Michael?
I'd like to deal with item nine now. Otherwise, we'll never get it done. So. If I may make a motion.
You may make a motion.
I move to approve the minutes of July eighteenth, twenty-twenty-three, July twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-three, July twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three. July twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-three, August first and August eighth, twenty-twenty-three.
Michael, you had a change to one of them that you wanted to make, and I will pull it up. I made it, but it's not in the packet, because it was after the packet came out, so give me one second to pull it up.
It was a correction, another change, right?
Right, it was a correction, I just wanted to show it to folks. Alright, folks, too many screens. I think it was the bottom of page three and four.
Would would be?
Uh, August eighth. You recall exactly where it was, Michael? I think I just made the change, so I didn't, uh.
Didn't highlight it.
I didn't highlight it, unfortunately. It was, um, it was, it was a correction regarding, um. That, uh, Kelsey had, um, not moved something, it was Mr. Smith who.
Uh, was a question of names, uh, I'll find it for you. Uh, um, page four, maybe? I said, I can dig up the email.
Mr. Smith moved add to the first goal, no?
It was one where, um.
She just missed.
It was stated who was, that Ms. Peterson was making the motion.
Oh, it's it's top, Ms. Peterson moved to add language, the language proposed by Ms. Peterson? Or Mr. Peterson? That one?
Yeah, that's the one.
Mr. Peterson moved to add the language proposed by Ms. Peterson?
Well, it was Mr. Smith who did one thing.
Who's Mr. Peterson? All right, so.
With the changes.
Made by.
Made to which? August minute, the minutes of August eighth, twenty-twenty-three. Do we have the correction made?
All right, I will second that. All in favor?
Hi.
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 Unanimous. All right, number nine is. Done.
Okay.
Okay, we are up to number seven. Okay, so, uh, number seven, update on recent city center activities and potential regulatory amendments. So a couple of updates that I wanted to share with you, one is just the FYI that is said at the beginning, which is that, um. The University of Vermont, um, made an announcement a couple of weeks ago, um, they had been lightly communicating with us, they've not submitted any application yet. But that they are pursuing a proposal to add, uh, about four stories. Um, large building, possibly two buildings, um. Behind the Doubletree Hotel, um, so where the conference area parking is. Um, so that's uh another addition there, they're um looking at the possibility of. Um, a few different configurations, but just wanted to share that there is more taking place. That one would be student housing, um, because that's much closer to the campus, what's being, um, built and what's been approved over here is not. Um, it's, it could be graduate student, but it's not undergraduate student housing. Um, yesterday, as I mentioned, um, staff did a walk-around with city council around uh the city center area. Um, to, there's been some discussion, um, amongst counselors at some meetings about what. You know, what, how are they feeling about what's what's, um, being built and do they have any feedback, so we did sort of a walking tour and. Gathered a little bit of feedback from them about, um, uh, some ideas that they had about, uh, how they. Some of them felt that the architecture was a little bit, um, blocky, I guess would be how I would describe it, they, that's not their words, that's my word.
Paul Engels would say Soviet. Paul Engels would say Soviet.
No, I, no, that was.
Is that you? Okay, some somebody.
Uh, no, I I had intended to to participate in that, but I couldn't, so I had a. Opportunity to have a brief, make my comments to, um. To, uh, the counselor, really.
Right, um, so, uh, we talked, we gave a handout to council and I will, I'm I'm sorry that I didn't get a chance to turn it around to you guys as well. Um, but I will for your next meeting to talk about sort of a phased approach about how do we want to be looking at some. Adjustments in city center, there are some things that have been happening for a while that are directly related to city center, like. The replacement of our traffic overlay district, that is a tool that we have in our zoning that places a hard cap. On the number of vehicle trips, um, along Williston Road, along Shelburne Road. It, the idea was to allow for more, to incentivize things like closing curb cuts and to allow for free-flowing movement of vehicles, but. Over time, what it has become is a direct obstacle to, um, infill redevelopment, especially for small businesses. Who can't afford to do a big project, so, um, this has now become a thing that is literally stopping. Redevelopment on Shelburne Road, uh, on Williston Road and even small-scale, just small business expansions, they want to add two thousand square feet. To a small grocery or something, and they're just stuck, they can't really do it, so this is. Project we've been working on for a while with our consultant, we picked back up about a month ago, and so in about two months. Um, the Mi- the meeting that Michael's going to be missing, we're going to be, um, coming to you with that.
Oh, my God, that's the most important meeting to me, it will.
We are, uh, intending in the next few months as well to, um. Develop a program and start to look at some midterm changes that will affect. Some of what counselors and some of what you've been talking about around some design pieces, we want to make sure that's been done thoughtfully and not sort of just, you know. Carve out a knife and, um, and and do it without some thought to it. In the immediate term, I have a third one that I'd like to bring to you at your very next meeting, um, and that is, so your September. Twelfth meeting, um, we have, um, found an an odd circumstance that is sort of become. Uh, uh, time-sensitive right now that will also become an issue for multiple other properties, and that's, um. Our form-based code requires that all buildings have at least one facade on a street. And it makes a lot of sense in terms of supporting a, um, urban environment where, um. Buildings are on sidewalks and streets and things like that. Um, the oddity is that there are about five or six circumstances around the form-based code. Where due to either the existence of the interstate or due to, um, natural resources like wetlands and things like that. That streets wind up having an L in them, there's a turn, and then the result is that there's a pocket. In the corner of the L, that's a dead space, um, that cannot. A building can't go there because there's no way to have that building have a start on the street, because they're in the pocket of the L. The specific circumstance of where this is happening is, right now, is at the former Holiday Inn site, so you've seen the new building under construction. That site is currently approved for that building that is being built, which is a multi-family building, five stories. A hotel that would be right up against, um, Dorset, uh, Williston Road, another five-story building there. And a renovation to the Holiday Inn. Uh, after a lot of, um, research and looking into that building and looking at its structure and. Um, having been heavily used during the, um, pandemic, um, for, um. Uh, shelter, that building does not, they they already knew it was going to need major work, the building is not viable for them any longer. So, um, they came to us with a proposal to tear it down, replace it with a new. Multi-family building that would include, meet the inclusionary standards, um, be about five stories in height. Um, and have a really neat, um, uh, pedestrian plaza between. Essentially what is now the Holiday Inn and the new building, however, because it's in the pocket here, they can't get approval for that building.
So, that, yeah, so that road is, so the road is going to go in and then is it going to? Go over towards the wind jammers?
That's correct, so that's what's on your official map, and that's what they are building.
Can you bring that up?
Yep, I sure can.
What's that? I don't know, that little piece of road caused some change.
Something where a reveal might be very helpful.
Okay, so I'm going to show the map here, well, and I'll 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 bring into the next, the next layer of it, which is a little bit more of a. Counsel issue, but, um. Hang on one second. Okay, so. Yeah, there, come on, catch up to me, there we are.
Right, so.
So, uh, this, so Williston Road here.
Yeah, yeah.
Top of Dorset Street here, um, this is the Windjammer here. Um, and this is the CVS right here, so this black line is the official map. Road, what is actually being built comes up to here, and then we'll go across, and right now they're building it to this point, because that's. The entirety of their property, but, um, part of the construction work that you're seeing out there right now is moving. This intersection to be properly aligned with, uh, Dorset Street and to make it an actual roadway entrance. This orange space here is the building that is currently under construction. Uh, you can see just faintly under there.
The old holiday.
The old Holiday Inn, which looks shockingly small now, if you've been out there. Uh, the orange is the approximate location of the hotel that's. Uh the orange is the approximate location of the hotel that's been approved. Um so that building fronts both on Dorset Street and this new road.
They have not started construction.
They've not started construction, but they have full, full approval for it. And this red area is the area where they would like to replace. The Holiday Inn with a new building, so because the road goes up like this and then goes over like this. It doesn't have a facade in the street. Um they could theoretically do something by putting the roadway right through here. But then that destroys the public space and the whole point of creating a a high quality, so what they want to do and what staff has been supportive of is. Um having the vehicular access go around like it does today, so that cars are to the periphery and the. Um quality civic spaces in the middle of the whole thing to really create a plaza.
But we still need to get around the fact that form-based codes, it ha- it has to have a facade?
Right, it has to have a facade in the, in the um, so so that's problem.
Yeah, yeah.
Problem two that makes this more immediate is um the form-based code says that. Your, each facade that faces onto a street. Must meet certain design standards. Um this building here faces onto this street, this um what's gonna become the, you know, the street that they're building. It does not, um it is attractive in its facade that faces the interstate, but it was never. Designed or constructed with the um with having to meet a standard of of facing the interstate as a street. Because the Holiday Inn was there. They, if they take the Holiday Inn down, this building that they are building becomes a non-permissible building. Um immediately because this building becomes facing the street. So there's a timing issue where they would love to get it, as soon as they get approval for, to build a new building here. The issue goes away because again, it gets blocked by, this building is is not facing the street anymore. But they're in a, they're in a sequen- sequential timing issue. Um that they are um considering, that the council is considering a development agreement with them whereby. They would commit to construction of. This red building. Um and the city would be considering or would allow, under certain, under the circumstances, this building to be occupied. Um under.
While that's being demolished.
While that one's being demolished and rebuilt, or or being being approved, so the catch is that the zoning doesn't allow it to exist. So that's where you all come in.
So I I, and you said this is a situation that could arise in.
Right.
Four or five other properties.
Right, so looking at some other places, um the U-Mall, the most likely. Um medium-term redevelopment would be to turn what is sort of the current. Um access route where the buses go around into um a roadway. That will eventually, if they ever come to do a redevelopment of or or infill where the um. Hannaford is, creates the same situation, if they ever want to rebuild this corner, they get the same situation. Um San Remo Drive. Has the same issue down in the corner here.
Is that Pizzagalli's property?
That's PC Construction's property, so they could solve it by having one big giant building. But if, that that extended this entire length, but if they wanted to create something that was more consistent with the scale of the neighborhood behind it. They would be precluded from doing it because that building space is in a corner.
Join the two buildings with a skyway and it's one.
It is. It is possible, and then, and then, and then there's this site, which is probably further down the road, but if ever the Village Green Apartments. The most likely scenario for redevelopment in this area. Uh and something that you all talked about a while ago, whoops, excuse me, was planning a roadway. Through this area here to connect Ruth Street over to. Um Mary Street, uh sorry, Market Street, allow for some infill in this area, but then you get this pocket again in the corner.
Would um. I'm not sure if this would solve the problem, but in addition, if you added in addition to. Uh having a facade on the street side, if you said, or a courtyard side. Because, you know, courtyards often are the main facade of a building in a higher density area. And we're not doing much to encourage courtyards otherwise, and I think we should do more to encour- encour- encourage.
I'd be very comfortable with something like that, I think that um, you know, right now, our our idea was to bring something to you to consider at your next meeting. Um and and I'd be happy to spin that up as one of the ideas, that the the preview tonight is something is coming next, at the next meeting, so.
I mean, it seems like it, that's a great suggestion from Donna.
Yep.
Is that, that's, that's good urban planning too.
Uh the, th- this building here that is under construction is largely residential with one. Um from when I've walked through a beautiful commercial space. This building is likely to be, what they s- what they submitted to us before realizing that they had this issue was mostly apartments. With a, again, a small commercial space, and then the one in front is proposed to be a hotel.
So a hotel and then two mixed residential commercial.
Correct.
Yeah, so you you propose to come to us with language next week.
Next meeting, and I'll certainly take that as a.
Great suggestion from Tom.
Okay.
The Blackon is a future road.
That is, it is an approximation of the future road.
So they they would build the road to the end of their property, that would be up for the wind, up to the wind jammer to decide if they want to finish that road or leave it.
Um so if, if and when the re, so two things could happen, in the shorter term, the wind jammer would be able to connect if they chose. And it might be very much to their interest of getting direct access off a traffic light.
Oh, yeah.
Um they would be required to build some form of road if they did a major redevelopment. And that would apply to the other properties as well. Um but I have a separate longer-term project for you of, um we did complete a study a little while ago. Um that sort of refined some of where these lines exactly go, that aren't reflected in your official map.
Yeah, if if those. Long rectangular lots are ever developed, you're gonna need a road.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we've talked about infill back there for years.
That's where I.
Yeah.
Think we should have the highest possible density.
Okay. Um so that's the big one that I want to be sharing, um we're also gonna be meeting in the not-too-distant future with the. Um and we reported this to the council last night with the Economic Development Committee to talk about some tweaks to the sign ordinance and to the peddlers ordinance. Um the sign ordinance is really designed for a suburban community, it doesn't even allow for. Uh projecting signs that exist on places like Church Street, pedestrian-oriented signs are are prohibited. Unless you cannot put a freestanding sign, so we're trying to flip that for places like Market Street.
Back, we used to have a a sign review committee and I was on it. And uh we said that all way back then, it's like, why can't you put a sign up where you can see both sides?
Yeah, so we're getting there, um and then some updates to the peddlers ordinance, which, you know, it's it's uh. It's written as though door-to-door magazine sales is the wave of the future. Um it does not contemplate things like food trucks or, so we have some catching up to do, especially now that, you know, city center. Market Street has plugs for. Um food, for food trucks um to be plugged in and. Those little, yeah, that's what those little uh.
Looking to figure out if you could plug a car into those.
We would recommend that you use the ones out back.
You could, but you're not gonna get a charge.
Okay, that's all I had on that item.
So, an overview of Newtown Center designation renewal.
Yes, so this is a quick one, but uh Nick wanted to just give you an update as to where we're at. Do you want me to pull up the maps that um?
I have it here, actually, um. I should, but for some reason I'm not having sharing, um I don't have sharing permissions, god. Or, oh, I'm sorry, I figured that one out. So, um can everyone hear me? Um. So uh as you are aware, the uh. City center area holds two designations right now, the underlying Newtown Center designation. And the surrounding neighborhood development area designation, these are state designations um. Granted by um DHCD that confer certain tax and permitting and municipal. Uh authority um privileges on properties um in the areas that have been so designated. Um we're coming up on an opportunity to, uh well, the requirement to re- to renew both of these designations. Through the the state process, and um it is staff's recommendation to um. It take this opportunity to expand the neighborhood development area that um. Is uh attached to this Newtown Center area, so just to back up quick uh a little bit, the Newtown Center program um. Essentially creates the ability to create um uh tax increment financing. And it also um allows for um infill growth and streamlines Act two fifty permitting requirements. It just puts a lot more um of the, it essentially uses local zoning and regulation um. As the the primary vehicle for review and um saves applicants time and money.
Quick, quick question, Nick, um the map we're looking at, the red is what's currently in the designation and the blue is what's proposed to be added?
Yes, so um this sort of red-orange uh here is the Newtown Center District, that's the sort of baseline enabling. Um designation, these darker red areas are the current neighborhood development area, which goes a little bit beyond. Both geographically and programmatically beyond the uh NTC or the Newtown Center designation. Finally, the blue areas are the areas um. Uh with that staff have recommended be, uh the neighborhood development area be expanded to, with a couple of little exceptions that I can get to in just a second. So um like I was uh saying, the NDA areas, neighborhood development areas, just confer extra benefits. And extra streamlining um to the the basic idea of removing certain Act two fifty um. Uh does, or back to fifty requirements and um and and fees to the Newtown Center area, so. Um NDA, you can uh designate areas with uh within a quarter mile of uh an NTC. And um we recommend that that we start to take advantage of a larger area um and to enroll in the NDA program. Um. Couple of thing, a little bit of background, the original idea or unoriginal idea, um that was actually uh. Uh removed from consideration before I even um was hired by the city was to uh. The, you know, this area over here, the Staples Shopping Center and parts of this neighborhood are included in the quarter-mile buffer. That where where an NDA can be um expanded to, but um. One of the other sort of subrequirements of expanding an NDA is to have a direct connection and lacking a pedestrian bike bridge yet. Um is uh decided that uh or determined that that would be a harder sell than the areas that are directly adjacent to.
However, we promised the state staff that the second that that bridge is under construction, we're coming back. And they were excited to hear that.
I re- we, I remember, we saw the map that included the area across the interstate as part of the.
Right, so their guidance to us in the preliminary review was that it wouldn't be able to qualify yet, but it's because.
As a connection.
Right, that would qualify as a connection, but going across the whole cloverleaf just didn't pass the straight chase to test to them, especially because there's no actual way to get to. Corey Hill Road, even after you cross.
Isn't there another area that uh we could uh have as a neighborhood development or or uh. Down on Shelburne Road?
So, in your work plan for this year or in staff, in the city work plan is to start to. Engage heavily with all the players that need to be participating to enable us to do something like that. Right now, the state law says you can only have one Newtown Center, period. So we are not eligible to get a second one, however, um when I was testifying on S one hundred this year, I talked to the committee. And I said, hey, looking for some other tools, we're not unique in this, there's a whole bunch of places that have. You know, the need for something like a sprawl repair, you know, then uh between Newport and Derby, between Berry and Montpelier. Everywhere outside of Rutland, um St. Albans Town, there's a bunch of areas where the same circumstance exists. And so I think that there's, it's a longer, it's a longer game, it's the short answer, Michael, but we're working on it.
In the meantime, this is the proposal for the the opportunity uh for us to uh expand along with renewal. Um you notice a couple of little areas that have shaded green here and here, the uh. The original map had these mapped in, but it was pointed out that the park is not eligible for um NDA eligible or enrollment. And this little section of um the former city hall property is current, currently has a zoning designation that makes it ineligible. That's another thing that we're going to be working on in the short term to um the file an amendment for once that zoning change has been affected.
Right, so the council has approved some of the ARPA funds to support some infill housing on a sort of the back area of the former city hall site. Um so they're excited about that, unfortunately, because it's zone municipal, it's not eligible to be in the NDA. So what we talked about with um state staff was, let's get the bulk of this done. There's nothing that stops us in four months from going right back to them, so that's a tweak we're working on in the zoning, we'll be coming to you as soon as we've got something.
Question, where your cursor is right now? Uh that.
Yes.
Yeah, that area there, that's not blue. Uh to the, to the left of Dorset Street.
That neighborhood? Yeah.
Yeah, that that neighborhood, why isn't it included in? So, blue.
Um there's a, there's an official reason and there's a practical reason, the official reason is that neighborhood development areas must. Um in order to qualify, it must have higher densities than the surrounding areas in your zoning. And that is an R four area, so it is what is around it, it doesn't meet the standard of being higher. The practical piece to to accompany is um the, the 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 boundaries that you see here reflect. The city center form-based code and the R seven, which are the higher-density areas. And we didn't want to be jumping ahead of where the commission's conversations are around, what does it look like to see to foster more infill in? Single-family, largely single-family neighborhoods.
Hmm, because the piece along, the narrow piece along Dawson is is commercial or mixed.
Right, so that is in your, and it's in your form-based code.
Yeah. Um so the uh only action, or there's no real official action required of uh planning commission at this time. Um we wanted to bring this before you um, get your take on it, any feedback, um but at this point, then uh. The next step uh besides finishing a couple of other small pieces require of information documentation in the application is to. Bring this proposal and before city council for their um feedback.
So if you wanted to make a motion of support, then you're welcome to, but there's no mandatory action required of you.
I certainly support it, I'd go for it. Yeah, I I would make a motion that we support the uh addition of the lands shown on the map to the. Neighborhood development area, so designation. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, I just have one item under other business for you, um as I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, uh the. Um we just got a forty-five day pre-application notice for an application of the Public Utilities Commission. Um. For a one-point-one megawatt solar array on the roof of the new Beta Building. Um so it's gonna be entirely rooftop, it is um well above the maximums allowed for a net metering project. But they have worked with Green Mountain Power to be co-applicants for it to be actually considered a power purchase agreement, not net metering. Um so it's really exciting, it's gonna be one of the largest solar arrays in the city and on a rooftop. Um they're gonna be making two requests of you, one is um. If you and the Regional Planning Commission um authorize it, you can waive the remainder of that forty-five day pre-application notice. So at your next meeting, if you both waive that, then they can get their application in sooner. Um the second um is they're um seeking, you know, just a statement of support. Um the thing I want to ask you tonight is, um you're welcome to just have the, you know, sign it up and says we support the project. But if you wanted to make a more. Significant statement than just we supported, if you wanted us to draft up some kind of a resolution actively supporting it. Um because I know that this is exactly what you've been talking about in your work, that we'd be happy to have a draft for you in your next packet, but we didn't want to do that without your okay.
Yes, please.
Yeah, yeah.
Great, that's all I got?
I had one, I, since I didn't go on the tour. Um of city center, I did have a comment, which is that. Personally, I am extremely disappointed in the aesthetics of all these block-like buildings. Um. There's nothing that we can do about it because they've complied with the requirements of the form-based code, but. To try and get some. Imaginative.
If, if you want your credit, yeah.
If, if you want your credit, yeah, turn, turn this.
Try and get some imaginative uh design into city center, uh, I don't know what we can do. I don't know who designs these buildings, whether they're just, I know one can pick them off the in- internet, ready-made. Um, but uh, and most of them are by the same developer, right, it's all Braverman.
Side of Braverman?
Uh, m- most of the, just about all the ones around here are by the same developer and mostly by the same architects.
Architect, do you know the architect?
The architect, uh, I know the firm, I don't know the person.
The firm?
Who's the firm?
I mean, I don't have it off the top of my head, but.
Let me know, uh, because if, if it's designed by an architect. Uh, it's not great, um, we were really, the people who worked on form-based code for so many years. Really had hoped for a different look here, that, you know, the, but the buildings don't have to be. Rectangular or square, the buildings can be curved, they can follow the curve of the road, there's all kinds of ways in which uh they could be made. More pleasing to look at and, and, and not, as I said, post-Soviet block-like, at least they're not made of concrete, which is. What they did in Russia, but um, uh, they aren't really, they aren't really interesting, um. And, you know, we had hoped when we wrote in, into the form-based code, the use of. Um, lo- local materials, you know, granite and marble and wood. Uh, that we, we would see something a little different to what we're seeing now.
I mean, I, I think about the building that Joe Larkin built down on Shelburne Road. You know, that, that, that's a nice-looking building, yeah, the one, the one right by McDonald's there, right across from, I, I think that, that's a.
On the corner of Fayette.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that wasn't built by them, that was built by um.
Is that, I thought that was.
Larkin.
Yeah, no, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, much, much, much nicer.
Yeah, no, that, that's, that, that, that's a lovely building.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it, it can be done.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, I.
But how? I mean, you can't regulate it unless you have an architectural design, uh, uh, there is a design. Isn't there some kind of committee, a design review committee in South Billington?
There was many moons ago, there is not currently.
Right, I mean, I think I was just in Montreal over the weekend and, you know, just, just, just biking around through the neighborhoods there. The thing that you really notice is the architecture is not stunning, but there's a lot of balconies.
Yeah.
A balcony, a balcony adds a lot of interest onto a facade and it makes a residential apartment. A lot more livable, just to be able to open a door and get some fresh air.
I know that Councilor Chalick has been voicing this to the council and chewing my ear about it too. Uh, you know, no balconies. The new buildings that uh Summit is doing.
Yeah.
They've got no balconies, they've got seventy-nine apartments, no bu- no balconies. Uh.
Or, or maybe they have a rooftop deck or something where people can go, because, I mean, it's, it's creating some um. Outdoor space for residents to have semi-privacy anyway, you know, it's like balconies don't give you much privacy, but. It certainly, it certainly gives you a breath of fresh air.
Our, our former colleague, Monica Osby, was one of those who was trying hard to advocate for this. That we should have it as a requirement.
Well, we will be coming back to in the near future with an outline of how to, how to tackle these issues.
I have a, I have a whole list.
Great.
All right, seeing nothing else to be done, we are adjourned.
Thank you.